Okay. All right. So, good evening, welcome to the Village Well. This is Judith Martin-Straw, I'm the publisher and editor of Culver City Crossroads, and I'm here tonight to moderate the Culver City Democratic Club City Council Candidate Forum. So, we have with us our incumbent Mayor Yasmeen Imani-McMoran, our candidate Bubba Fish, our candidate Nancy Barba, and our candidate Janine Wosnowski-Stalen, all of whom are commissioners or have been, we'll get a little more introductions, but they get a moment to introduce themselves. So, we're gonna go through just some two-minute introductions, so we'll let the candidates get their two minutes in to introduce, and I'll start with our mayor, Yasmeen.
Are we sharing this?
Yeah.
Probably should've tested that before. Am I coming through all right? Yes, all right. Good evening, my name is Yasmeen Imani-McMoran, I use she/her pronouns, I have the honor and privilege of serving as our mayor here in Culver City. I'm the youngest serving council member, only woman on the council. Being here with a lot of women on the panel and just one man is very strange for me. It's just, I think it's a good thing. And, the first woman of color and black woman to serve as mayor, so very honored for that. And, I'm running for reelection because there is more work to be done, there is a lot more that we could do in affordable housing, there is way more that we can do in mobility and transit, and to make sure that we sort of widen how we think about safety. And, I just believe that fundamentally, we belong to one another. This collective work of investing in a future of Culver City that is expansive and includes all of us and has the tools and the things for us all to thrive is absolutely possible, and like really leaning into that is something that I really appreciate, and it's like a joy to be a part of doing this work. So, yeah, let's keep moving Culver City forward together, and I'm looking forward to our time together on the panel. And, thank you for having us, Culver City Democratic Club and Crossroads, appreciate y'all, and candidates. All right, now pass it down.
Yeah, over to Bubba Fish.
All right, good evening, and yeah, thank you also to Culver City Democratic Club, to the Village Well, to Judith, everybody subscribe to Culver City Crossroads, local journalism is as vital as ever. My name is Bubba Fish, and I currently work as Transportation Deputy for the County of Los Angeles. I've devoted my career to enhancing mobility across the LA region, and making sure people can get to where they need to go safely and efficiently and sustainably. I am really excited and honored, I would be honored to have your support for this position, for Culver City Council member. I'm an advocate, I'm an organizer, I am a graduate student at UCLA, actually, earning my degree in public policy in two weeks. And, I am also a renter, a lifelong renter. And, my husband and I moved to Culver City seven years ago, we instantly fell in love, the vibrant community, the diversity, the inclusivity, that's what we loved about Culver City, and you know, we're renters, and we'd love to be able to potentially, you know, own a home one day, or maybe start a family, and that's something that's seeming, you know, farther and farther out of reach for folks like me, for young folks all across the city. And, you know, we have parents who, you know, are heartbroken that their young people can't live near them or can't afford to, we have seniors who are on, you know, one rent increase away from eviction or from displacement. So, this is something I'm really motivated to help address, is the rising cost of homelessness among many other things that make our cities, you know, inclusive or not, and Culver City is such a wonderful place, the diversity makes it so vibrant, and I hope that as your council member, I can foster that vibrant, diverse community that we love and enjoy here. Thank you.
And, we're gonna take it over to Nancy Barba.
Good evening, Culver City community, I am honored to be here, my name is Nancy Barba, I use she/her pronouns, I am a mom, I am Latina, I am a fierce believer that we can create a city that would work for everyone. I'm the daughter of immigrants, and I grew up in south-central Los Angeles with my mom and my three siblings. I have been a care-centered budget advocate since my time on the Finance Advisory Committee. I'm also a housing advocate, and I am the founder of a grassroots organization, Culver City More Homes. I believe that we can create the housing that is plentiful and affordable for everyone that wants to live in Culver City. As a City Planning Commissioner, I have dedicated my time to streamlining housing, to make sure that we have housing infill equitably distributed across our city, and to create the space for more housing by eliminating parking minimums for residential reconstruction. Professionally, I am a climate practitioner. I work with cities, regional governments, and state agencies to implement building decarbonization and electrification. So, as we think about a climate resilient community, and we think about how we can create there, I do that for a living. I do workforce education and training in a variety of statewide programs that will help us decarbonize our buildings. I am an Electric Sierra Club Executive Committee member of the Angeles Chapter. I'm a very proud urban environmentalist, mobility advocate, and sustainability advocate. I am an organizer that believes that we can march in the face of injustice. Thank you for having us.
And we'll pass it on down to Janine Wosnowski-Stalen.
Thank you. There we go, don't want you to have to hold that on your lap. Hi, I'm Janine, hi, I'm Janine Wosnowski-Stalen, and I am running for City Council because I believe that city government is at its best when leaders respond with compassion and vision to the needs of all who live, work, and enjoy our beautiful city. I am a proud lifelong Democrat, a feminist, a nonprofit exec, a public schools advocate and volunteer, a fourth-generation union member, an artist with an MBA, a neighbor, and a full-time working mom. I'm in my second term as a Cultural Affairs Commissioner here in the city. You know, my husband and I bought our first and only home after the birth of our first child. We were drawn to Culver City because of its strong community spirit and its beautiful tree-lined streets and its excellent public schools. Our three daughters attended the CCUSD schools from kindergarten through high school, where I was an active volunteer in the schools and in the district, and I still am, actually. I believe in community and in collaboration, and that is why I co-founded several organizations that are focused on local issues in our schools, in our parks, and in our neighborhoods. After the 2016 election, I co-founded and I serve on the Executive Board of Heart of L.A. Democratic Club, which is the first LA-county-wide feminist democratic club, you can believe that, 2016, where we actively support democratic candidates and legislation in the fight for women's equality, equity, and body autonomy. In my union, I serve on two SAG-AFTRA committees where I fight for arts workers. In my eight years as a Cultural Affairs Commissioner, I co-created the Artist Laureate Program, funded live performances, and I co-authored the Commission's DEIA statement. I have extensive experience in community building and successfully running businesses. I am passionate about affordable housing, a working wage, saving our environment, mobility, public safety, and I also understand the importance of connecting hearts and minds through the beauty of art, and how it feels to keep a business open and make payroll. I am ready to meet Culver City's unique challenges and opportunities head-on and do the most good for the most people. Thank you.
Great, thanks for your openings, we really appreciate it, and I wanna give everybody their propers that I really didn't do as we jumped in at the beginning here. So, I did introduce Yasmeen, she's our sitting mayor at the moment, she is the incumbent running for reelection. These are four of the six candidates, we also have two other candidates who are not able to be with us tonight, running. Nancy Barba is currently on the Planning Commission, I think you mentioned that in your opening. Bubba Fish is a former homelessness, member of the Committee on Homelessness, and Janine, as she introduced, is on the Cultural Affairs Commission. So, everybody has a nice grounding in what our local government is, and how it works, and how we do all that, so we're glad to have you here with us. Our first, so we're gonna do a series of questions, there'll be five questions, nobody has had these questions in advance, so this is all gonna be very spontaneous, you get the same two minutes to answer, and after that, we will do a lightning round if we have some more time left. And, of course, we have just a couple of topics most of you have already touched on that are very, very important in the upcoming election. So, first of all, we'll be talking about housing. So, I have a, sorry, I have a little schedule here on who to call on in what rotation, because we didn't want to get everybody in the same order at the same time, it gets a little, you know, it's a little too standard. So, the question is, California is facing a housing crisis which is felt most dramatically in desirable cities like ours on the west side. What specific policies and bills do you support to address supply, stability, and affordability? So, we're gonna start this question with Bubba.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Judith. When I think about housing, I think about the rising cost of rent, I think about the conversations I've had with families that are, that have, you know, young people that have grown up here, and that are having to make the choice between, can I start a family or can I live in the city that I love? And, to me, that's a really heartbreaking decision that folks are being forced to make, and obviously, this is a region-wide problem, right? We have 50,000-plus people sleeping on the streets in LA County. And, these issues are completely intertwined, right? As the cost of housing goes up compared to incomes, we're seeing people falling into homelessness by the thousands. I come from Houston, Texas, a city that has become famous for embracing an approach called Housing First. They have moved over half of their homeless population, 26,000 people, into housing by embracing this model. This model essentially, its entire focus is, once you bring people into housing, that's the first thing that they need, and then they can address other issues that they might be having in their lives, whether it be drug addiction, mental health, but everything hinges on having housing. It's been enormously successful there, and every time I go home, it's like stepping into the Twilight Zone, because it's one of the few cities that really, where homelessness has really visibly decreased over my lifetime. And, I really hope that we can continue to embrace it. I served on, as the Vice Chair of the Housing and Homelessness Committee here for two years. We were part of the advocacy for Project Home Key, which has housed 73 families in Culver City, is beginning to house 73 families in Culver City. By our last count, in our last homeless count, we have 260 unhoused individuals. I think we can do better by them by expanding renters protections across the city. I think we can do better by our city by embracing more housing, we definitely need more housing supply in order to level off the dramatic increases that we're seeing. And, we can do that by embracing some new state laws that are coming into effect, including the ability to buy and sell ADUs, which I think could help families start, you know, with a starter home, or elderly folks who might be in a larger house than they can accommodate at the moment but are afraid to move out. There's so much that we can do, and that's just the top of it, I can do another two, but thank you, appreciate the question.
We'll call that two minutes, yeah, absolutely. Nancy, next, as you, go ahead and take up on, tell us about housing.
And, the question was again, policies and legislation.
What specific policies and bills, if there's any bills that you know of, state legislation going on right now, do you support to address supply, stability, and affordability?
Great, so, thank you, this is such a critical question today, and we will be facing this critical question for the foreseeable future, because we did not get here overnight, it took decades of policy decisions to get us to this place. This is why I strongly support care, housing first, and strongly oppose criminalization of poverty and being unhoused. So, what are some of the policies I support? I support urban infill, the denser the better. We have made the decisions that already have informed the land use element for our general plan, and even so, we find that in some of those regions, that we all supported density, we all wanted it on the corridors, we still cannot create the type of housing that used to be able to be created decades ago. We need to allow for things like setbacks, both front and side setbacks, we need to allow for all the variation of housing that is possible in our cities. We must protect tenant protections, it is critical now more than ever. In the last few years, we've seen double-digit increases in Latinos being homeless, and as we know, black, Latino, and people of color have a super over-representation in the homeless population. We also need to allow density around transit hubs. We're very fortunate in Culver City that almost all of Culver City is fairly transit-rich, and we need to allow for greater density. We also need to do everything we can internally, as a city, to streamline housing. Housing affordability is in our hands, and it's all policy decisions. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, Janine, take it next.
All right.
Thank you.
You have ESP. Hi, this is really, this is a question that I've been thinking about a long time, because over two decades ago, my husband and I, on artist salaries, were able to buy our first and only forever home here in Culver City. And, I am one of those families where I have, I have three daughters, my oldest is a public school teacher for LAUSD, and she's about to get married, and she and her fiance cannot afford to buy a home, and rent is really high. So, this is an issue that hits my family, and hits home, as they say. So, and I remember as a young artist, as a young person, remembering how high rents are, going into Santa Monica and trying to get, and if anybody remembers this, going into Santa Monica and trying to get a rent control apartment. You had to pay like two years' rent on top of, then they can promise rent control. So, this has been an issue that's been going around a long time. I am very concerned about affordability, and I'm also very concerned about the demise of naturally occurring affordable housing. Naturally occurring affordable housing are the older buildings that people can afford, and what's happening right now all across LA, we see it along Overland Boulevard, is that these older buildings are being bought up, and they're being demolished, and luxury buildings are put in, and people who used to live there were displaced, and people, new people can barely afford to live there. I think that we need to figure out how to make naturally occurring affordable housing not, you know, not be a thing of the past. So, how do we do that? We need to keep our mom and pop landlords. Our city is doing a couple of things already that I really support, and they've streamlined the ADU process, just, you know, as, it's not, it's not the big solution, but they streamlined the ADU process, which means they have, they have plans that people can go in, and it doesn't cost them a lot, thank you, it doesn't cost them a lot to figure out how to do an ADU. I'm all for that. I have a whole bunch more, I've been given the hook.
You're, we're calling time there.
Yeah, calling time, I'd love to talk about this further.
And, it's a topic that, of course, there's a lot to discuss, and everybody has a lot to add in.
Of course.
So, we're gonna hand this over to Yasmeen.
Thank you for the question. Housing continues to just be, I fundamentally believe it's a human right, we should all have a fundamental right to housing, as a mother, as a single mom, you know, even when I just talk to young people, and I know Bubba mentioned this about young folks, and talking to my daughter and her friends, and folks just don't believe that they'll ever be able to afford to live in our community, and that is such a failure, it's such a policy failure of local governments, you know, county and state, and I know that we are lacking arms now, and you know, I currently sit on the last award with Mayor Bass and Chair Horvath, and I'm grateful to be in that space and sort of seeing this issue, because housing and homelessness are, you know, intertwined, I think that's why everybody's kinda touching on it. But, we absolutely, it's like we are playing catch-up. Like Nancy mentioned, these are issues that took decades and decades of policy choices to reverberate so that we feel them acutely today, we feel the scarcity today, and we wanna, we wanna silver bullet, we wanna be able to say, okay, we came in and did this, oh, we have these beautiful, and shout-out to our director, new director of planning, I guess he's not so new anymore, Director Munzer, who did roll out the amazing ADU guidelines, and we're happy about that, but that is not gonna be the thing that fixes it, right? We need to unequivocally support renters, we need to, and rent control, we need to unequivocally stand by tenant protections, and we need to do everything that we can to support more housing in Culver City, and not just in Fox Hills, I live in Fox Hills, it's a dense community, I love it, it's the most diverse community in Culver City, but all of the housing in our community should not just be placed in Fox Hills, that is inequitable. We need to find ways to ensure that all of our communities are welcoming neighbors, and, you know, again, working regionally, working in partnership, and I believe that it can be done. It's a critical issue, and we have to band together and get it done.
There you go, thank you, and that's your, that's your two minutes there. And, again, it's, you know, if there's a lot of, every one of our issues is very closely interwoven. We've got a very tight web here of the challenges that we're facing and how we hope to face them. So, we're gonna move right into our next question on homelessness, and because we, yeah, it's salt and pepper, it's oil and vinegar, it's, these are the things that go. So, what we wanna ask is, Culver City has gradually become a leader in creating temporary housing through the Wellness Village, the motel leases, and of course, the transitional units at Project Home Key, but these are all intended to be short-term solutions, and some of them are actually classified as temporary solutions. So, people can stay, but it's not, it's not a long-time move in. So, what long-term and permanent programs do you think the city can offer that would be effective in addressing this? And, we're gonna start with Nancy.
Thank you for the question. I think long-term and permanent programs for housing have to be in how we zone our city. So, what does housing creation look like by a city? It can look like an affordable housing overlay that encourages affordability by giving the bonuses of density. Yes, we have density already, that is state-mandated, but that is not a limit, we can go far and beyond what the state sets as a minimum. We can streamline, we can encourage more in a variety of different types of housing, we can make it easier for housing to happen in Culver City. Right now, a whole lot of housing is not by right, that means that it has to be coming before the commission. I've been advocating for housing to be streamlined up to, you know, 20 or 40 units. We need to allow for housing creation. Yes, tenant protections are critical, just rent control is critical, yes, we need to provide things like Project Home Key, and I completely support it, but we also need to provide the permanent housing. When you see housing go on the market, it doesn't stay there for long, it doesn't matter what the price is, it could be luxury housing, it could be any condition, it could be rundown. People are desperate to live in our city, people are desperate to have a home, and people want housing. And, again, we didn't get here overnight, so that is why decriminalizing homelessness is such a critical and key issue, because we're not gonna create housing overnight, that's just not the way construction happens. And, we need to provide all of the possibilities for people to live in a safe way, or to exist in a safe way, including safe parking and temporary housing. Thank you.
All right, and we're gonna pass it back over to Yasmeen. Sorry, we've got random, random notes here, we need everybody interned, yeah, thank you.
Can you remind me of the question again?
So, what we were talking about was Wellness Village, the motel leases, Project Home Key, but what long-term and permanent solutions can we look to?
How much time you got? I know we got two minutes, but I think we need longer than two for this one, but, but I will say, I'm very proud, you know, I'm grateful for the leadership of prior councils that really laid the groundwork for the Safe Camping, for Project Home Key, although Project Home Key became from grant funding, but, you know, all of these things that we have now was because of the groundwork that was laid from prior councils, and it took much, you know, this is, took years to get it here, and so, I just wanna acknowledge that because that, you know, a little controversial, but it took time to get us to this point, and lots of advocacy, and so I'm grateful to staff and to former colleagues for really leading and advocating on those issues. In terms of turning the corner, I mean, so much more needs to be done, I wholeheartedly agree that we should not be criminalizing homelessness at all, we need to find ways to offer care and support and not be, you know, punitive or carceral, I mean, I see those, you know, daily reports that we get from the police, and the uptick in terms of contacts from police and our unhoused population has gone up, we don't know what the data is on that just yet, but that is heartbreaking to see, because people don't need that kind of intervention, they need care and support. And, so, you know, as, as the data shows, our seniors are the group that are falling into homelessness disproportionately, not because they're mentally ill, or not because older folks are using drugs, although they might, I don't know. I don't know what folks are doing in their homes, but, you know what I'm saying, we need to care for folks, no matter who, domestic violence survivors, veterans, no matter what, they are neighbors and we belong to one another, and the work is in continuing to try different solutions, I'm excited about motel leasing, but it's hand in hand, and I feel like too much, we are worried, far too much, we are worried about, we are worried about the quick fixes, and not enough in the sustainability of the programs that really continue to invest in the longevity and the sustainability of our systems, because it is system-based, and it's not charity-based, it's system-based. Okay, I'm out of time.
All right, you are, thank you, and Bubba comes next, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question, and, you know, I, I kind of think about this issue, and, you know, I think about the 260 people that, by our last count, that are experiencing homelessness, and the amount of pain that they're going through, and also the fact that 260 people is not an unsolvable problem. If we think, compare that to the 26,000 people that Houston was able to house, and I really like what Nancy brought up about zoning, obviously, housing capacity, building housing capacity allows us to level off and make a more friendly market. We've seen so much success with Mayor Karen Bass's Executive Directive One program, which streamlined, like Nancy was talking about, streamlining affordable housing production, allowing those things to not get caught up in city approvals, but allowing them by right, I think is so important. We've seen market-rate developers actually shift to affordable housing development, because it's so much faster to get through their projects, and that's really encouraging to me. And then beyond, you know, housing capacity, thinking about, you know, building out more permanent supportive housing services, so, you know, Mayor McMoran was really, you know, crucial in a lot of programs, Safe Camping, obviously, the Safe Sleep Site, the Safe, the Motel Reuse, Project Home Key site, obviously extremely important. I think safe parking is really important, for, we have a lot of folks that are living in their cars, giving them a place where they can sleep, and they can get janitorial services, hygiene services, car repair, that's, that's something that, you know, there's a lot of invisible homelessness, right, allowing a lot of housing insecurity, and we need more services for those folks, too. And, you know, I completely agree that the anti-camping ordinance that was passed, it was draconian, it's, at least in LA City, it was based on the 4118, which has been proven to be ineffective, we saw less than 0.1% of people secure permanent-supported housing from that, from that ordinance, I don't think it's backed by evidence, and I would love us to approach a care-first model instead, and of course, protect our tenants from being displaced and evicted in the first place.
Okay, and that's your time, yeah, thank you, and down to Janine.
All right. Thank you. Homelessness is a public safety and a public health issue. I do not believe, just like, I'm a big fan of Mayor Karen Bass, and I am very touched by the fact that she always says, and I agree with her, that it is a terrible thing and inhumane to walk by a person who's on the street and not do anything. So, it's extremely important that Culver City continues to So it's extremely important that Culver City continue to house our unhoused population, our unhoused neighbors. And our city has done a lot of things to do just that. I am very appreciative of our city government and what we've done to bring people inside with our Safe Sleep and our permanent supportive housing and our temporary supportive housing and the Upper Bound, which houses unhoused families, which is mainly single mothers and their children. Can we go farther? Yes. Should we go farther? Yes. But we are not an island. Culver City is in the largest county in California, and we need help. We are currently spending 9% of our city budget at our homelessness crisis. I think it's the right thing to do, and I think that we could go farther, but we need help from the county and we need help from the state. We do need affordable housing, which will help our homelessness crisis. You know, I went to an affordable housing forum a couple weeks ago where we had leaders in all corners of this issue talking about how to solve not only the homelessness crisis, but also the affordable housing crisis. And you know what they agreed on? They agreed on that they couldn't agree on how to do it because it's so hard. But they also agreed that they needed to keep trying, and I agree with that. And so let's solve this very real and very terrible humane humanity crisis. Thank you.
So, thank you. Just for clarification to our listeners, in case you didn't know, Safe Sleep and Wellness Village are the same place. So we've had different references throughout of people using the same language. So it was originally created by the city as Safe Sleep. The people who lived there wanted to rechristen it as Wellness Village. So just so you know, there are not multiple other locations that we're talking about. Wellness Village and Safe Sleep are the same place. Again, just about clarity and accuracy. So we're going to, thank you, Janine, we're going to go on to our next question, which is about public safety. So in 2020, Culver City committed to rethinking public safety, and the council has since received reports from the Center for Public Safety Management, Solidarity Consulting, the General Plan Advisory Committees, Public Safety Technical Advisory Committee, Remy and Associates, Million Dollar Hoods, and the UCLA Law School's Criminal Justice Project. That's a folder about that deck of just names. So the question is, what recommendations from these organizations or these documents will you promote if elected? There's an assumption that you know what most or all of these are, so if you have questions or if there's one in particular you haven't heard of, we can offer some clarity on that. So what recommendations from these documents would you promote if elected? And we are going to start with Yasmin.
Here it comes.
Who probably read that file.
I was outside for that time. Thank you for the question. I feel so, so thank you for lifting up all of the work that has been done around the issue of public safety. And I think it's really important to lift up those studies and examinations of our police department, our community, various experts, because for too often in Culver City, we have all these fantastic plans, but we never really see them carried out, from the bicycle pedestrian plans to some of the tree-scaping plans. Like, we have these fantastic plans and commitments, but they kind of sit on a shelf after we've commissioned them, so, you know. And I'm afraid the same thing has happened to these plans. In fact, the General Plan Public Safety recommendations, which are fantastic, you know, were thrown out, I believe, last year by a vote from our council majority, which is heartbreaking, and I actually looked back, I know I'm two minutes, but I look back at it because I just put out my memo on the budget, and I looked back at that survey that was done of residents and community members, and it just feels, you know, it is heartbreaking that as a policy we have just discarded folks' lived experience. And I get a lot of slack on the dais for lifting up another view of, or a more expansive view of public safety and lifting up stories and experiences of folks that I'm in community with who don't always share the same lived experience as others, and I think that's fine. But only one experience right now is centered. So to answer that question, let's pick one and do it, because right now, we're not doing anything. We're not doing anything, and I think that that is such, and I don't think it's an intentional slap in the face, and sorry to use such strong language, but we are really discarding people who believed in the process, who believed that they were contributing and believed the commitment that, you know, the council put out about, hey, we're working, this crisis has happened, and we want to make sure that we're showing up better. And we have just so quickly discarded that, just as it's gotten out of the news cycle, we've discarded it. And, you know, I'm so deeply disappointed by that, and I'm out of time. Thanks.
So next, we'll go to Janine.
All right. Thank you for the question. You know, I'm not, I've not read that apparently very thick packet, but I'm a nerd, I love to read things, so where do I find it? Public safety, of course, is a very broad issue, because we can talk about policing, we can talk about safe streets, we can talk about how dangerous it still is to be a woman walking around in America. We could talk about cybercrime, financial crime. If you feel unsafe, you are unsafe. How some populations feel safer than other populations because of lived experiences, backgrounds, age, race, how much they make, where they live in a city. I agree that public safety is extremely important, and I cannot just pick one area that I think we should focus on first, but let me tell you this. As a victim of a crime, as a parent who has been fighting to have safe passageway to the schools, my kids went to Culver City Unified School District and walked to school, and I'm scared every day for them to cross the street and get to school because of how fast cars go and how terrible our crosswalks are, and they could be better. I think we need to figure out how to make sure that everyone here has a safer environment. So, for instance, it was brought up about, we've had plans. We've had, for instance, a plan to fix bike lanes and safe passage over in the Fox Hills area, and that plan is over 15 years old, and we still haven't been able to do it. And the community over there has been crying for a way to improve their lives so they don't get hit by a car when they're trying to get from here to there. I think we really could start with the most vulnerable, thank you, the most vulnerable areas of Culver City and work that way.
Thank you.
I could go on, but I won't.
That's your time, yeah. So we'll take that over to Bubba.
Thanks, Judith. Yeah, I completely agree, we need a more holistic view of public safety, especially in our city. We spend, we're in the top, you know, 5% tile in terms of per capita spending on one department. We spend nearly a third, nearly 33% of our budget, Terry Resources, on one department, on the police department. And I'm really, I'm really motivated to explore all the different ways that folks feel safe in Culver City. And to me, you know, I think about trying to get the Mobile Crisis Hotline, which Mayor McMorn was really instrumental in creating, trying to get a friend of mine who was unhoused and trying to get shelter connected to the Mobile Crisis Line because they offer housing services, and guess what? It was after 6:00 PM, and the Mobile Crisis Hotline is only funded Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00 PM. And to me, how many mental health crises can you imagine probably happen outside of business hours, Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00? That's something that we could be funding a lot more rigorously and completely. You know, I think about the public safety element that was discarded and how it advocated for a holistic view of public safety. I think about the need for a police oversight board with subpoena power, because we had a man who was shot in the back while he was running away, while he was experiencing a mental health crisis. We do need accountability for people like that, and we also need a holistic view, a view that encourages people to get housed when they need it, a view that keeps people in their homes if they're at the threat of being evicted, and policies that encourage transportation to vital services, and just safer streets in general. Those are things in better lighting, there are so many ways we can universally make our cities more accepting and more inclusive and safer for everyone, including an ambassador service like Santa Monica has and like West Hollywood has, that are non-carceral, unarmed, and just are eyes on the street, that can report things and call for backup if needed. But those are new systems that we need to create, and they all require resources. And so I don't think it's enough to just say, well, yeah, it's, we want all these things. We do have to, at some point, pick and choose what we feel is effective, and to me, those are really important priorities for us.
Thank you. Over to Nancy.
And by default, I am next. I would implement everything in those, in that long stack that is no cost immediately. These, there is many, many, a multitude of policy choices that we make as a city that we can put institute pretty much overnight, that would decriminalize a lot of activities that we choose to criminalize. Being unhoused on the streets is Exhibit A. I think it's also really important to go back and review what we learned from that reimagining Public Safety in Culver City report. It had over 2,000 respondents. More than 50% of people polled said they were willing to remove animal services from the police department, to provide assistance, unarmed assistance for unhoused people experiencing mental crises and unhoused, people that, that, there was a lot of support to remove some of these basic needs out of the department. Why is that important? It's important because when we have one tool and police have a tool, right, it's responding to crime, then we only see things through that lens. And we need other tools, we need to be a Swiss Army knife of tools. So if someone's experiencing a mental health crisis, get someone that's adequately able to tend to that. If someone is experiencing an animal that's lost in the street, get someone with experience to take care of that. I think we can reimagine so much, I think this is all possible, and I think a good deal of those recommendations can be put in place in the next city council meeting.
Excellent. Thank you all so much for your responses. So we're here at the Village Well, and because we're in a bookstore, and of course, because you're talking to Judith, you're going to talk about books for just a little bit, because we do that. So we just wanted to go around and ask kind of what your reading recommendations are in terms of history, in terms of urban planning, in terms of social issues. I mean, you know, that doesn't exclude novels, you could have a novel that really touches on social issues. But I trust that you're all people who do a lot of reading and a lot of thinking, and we're going to start that one with Bubba.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think an instrumental book in my upbringing was definitely The Color of Law by Richard Rothstein. I, it goes through the history of cities and how local policy was leveraged to exclude people of color, to exclude low-income folks from a lot of our amenities, right, our transit, our local businesses, and how freeways especially were used to cut through our communities and enforce segregation. So even when segregation laws were repealed, even after Brown v. Board and a lot of really impactful Supreme Court cases, the segregation persisted because we continued to have infrastructure and local zoning laws and deed restrictions and things of that nature that continue to reinforce racial segregation, even if they don't, and some of them do still explicitly say so, but even if, when they don't explicitly say so, these policies, like, for example, a lot size, how big you have to build your house if you want to live in a certain neighborhood, can continue to reinforce racial segregation because of decades and decades of systemic inequalities that persist among different groups. So for me, when I think about fostering an inclusive city, I look back on that book and think, we do have a responsibility in Culver City to, as Nancy said, equitably, you know, create more housing supply, to encourage, if we want Culver City to remain diverse, if you don't want Culver City to remain diverse, that's not your goal, then you don't want to do those things. But for me, that's what made Culver City so vibrant, and that's what I think makes our city so special, is all the different people that live here. And I think if we want to continue to encourage that, then we need to look at all laws from the local county to the state to the federal level to encourage housing near transit and better, you know, better options and more variety and more options for families of all sizes and of all incomes. Thank you.
Excellent. Passing on over to Nancy. Nancy, pop us a title, or two, or three, it doesn't all have to be about one book.
I am going to pop the, the top five. So my current obsession is The Some of Us. The Some of Us is a brilliant book that actually the mayor had a book club to discuss it. It's a brilliant book that talks about what we all lose because of racism. Because of our desire to exclude someone, how much we all lose. There's plenty of research and evidence that supports that more diverse neighborhoods make us and enrich us as communities. Cast is another one I highly recommend, and there's a beautiful, beautifully done movie about that. Hood Feminism. For anyone that considers themselves a feminist, highly recommend Hood Feminism, because the history of feminism is not always great. Just like once upon a time, women were advocating for, to have a vote, they were not aligned with people of color gaining that vote. So it's really important to remember and to send, basically center the needs of black feminists. And then the last one that came to mind is The New Jim Crow. The New Jim Crow is brilliant, it is heartbreaking, and it is about the new carceral criminalization system and how we no longer need legal segregation, because we have that in every single one of our systems. And I think I'm not at time, but I think that's good enough.
Three titles is awesome. Actually, I was going to offer the author, James Everett, actually had a pet crow named Jim that sat on his shoulder while he wrote James. So on over to Janine.
Thank you. Our time people might be interested in this because of his profession, but I am a lifelong book lover because my mother helped set up, well, she did, she set up the library in my school when I was growing up. So I spent many, an afternoon after school and weekends helping set up the library, opening the boxes and smelling that smell of a brand-new book. And then I know the Dewey Decimal System, you know, putting the little Dewey Decimal System numbers on there handwritten and taping them to the, I love books, needless to say. And then she became the library coordinator for the school district. So I grew up never without a book. I don't have one in my bag right now, but I grew up with never having, yeah, you're in big trouble if you don't have a book on you. Mom, I'm bored, why don't you pick up a book? Okay, I got one. So what am I reading right now? I love fiction, I'm a fan of fiction, I'm not going to tell you what I read, but a book that I'm reading right now, which is really important to me, is a book called, I Never Thought of It That Way, by Monica Guzman. And the subtitle is How to Have Fearlessly Curious Conversations in These Dangerously Divided Times. And this book is an eye-opener. She is a, she's a liberal woman from Mexico, and her parents, living in Seattle, and her parents are Republicans who voted for Trump. And of course, they're family and they still love each other. And she talks about how it's not helpful to put people into piles and discard them and not see their humanity, because that does not help bring people's minds and hearts together. And that really touches me, and I love it. And then a book that I do pick up every once in a while is Gutsy Women by Hillary Clinton because she's got, and Chelsea Clinton, because she's, you can read a chapter about a woman in history, and boy, is that motivating and exciting.
Great, thank you. And, Ms. Yasmin?
I'm a little biased, but this is my favorite question so far, you know what I'm saying?
Not a local book club leader.
Picking up what I'm putting down. Okay, so we're going to start with the book club book for the month or for the quarter, Poverty by America, Matthew Matthew, is it Matthew Desmond? Is that his last name? He has, and this is my first male author. We've been reading all female authors to this one. Not intentionally, but they just write some good things. So, but highly, highly recommend Poverty by America. It really examines how we punish poor people as a society, how expensive it is to be poor in this society, and the baked-in benefits that we provide to higher-wage earners and middle-class owners that are just a part of our middle-class people or whatever, that are part of our system that we don't even think about. And I highly, highly recommend it. And you can join us. We'll chat about it on June 8th. Check my link tree because I don't remember the bitly right now. Also, just because we are in dystopian times, more and more, Octavia Butler, Pabro the Sower, It's Always Timely. I think the year, this year is the year that was referenced in, yeah, was referenced in the book, and she just knows all. So, so please, please read. And to follow up, Wart of Other Suns, which was another, actually, all three. Shout out, look at me recommending the good books. All three were book club first as vice mayor and now as mayor. Wart of Other Suns is an excellent job of describing the Great Migration, which isn't always talked about in school settings, but talks about how due to racial terror, Jim Crow, and police, you know, state sanctioned violence against Black folks in this country, Black folks fled the South to the East Coast, to the Midwest, to here in California, in Los Angeles, and told the story through three protagonists. And it's just a beautiful depiction of folks looking to have, you know, a better life from upper class to sharecroppers. I think Parishing was the doctor who came out here to LA. So it's just, we should all be reading more and, and, and join the book club. Okay.
And that's time. Yeah, there you go. So, yeah, we could have a whole other forum just about book clubs and what are you reading and all that great, great stuff. So, yeah, awesome. And our final question tonight is going to be about budget. So, we're not, we didn't call in the sound effects. These are just, yeah, it's, it's naturally occurring fully. So if our, our budget trends, so the council has just approved the budget for this coming year. And if, that's true. We're almost there. We're approaching, we're approaching the turning point. So if budget trends continue during the next four years, the city will need to be digging into reserves. So what specific combination of cuts, of new revenue or reallocation would you propose to prevent this? So we're gonna start with Janine.
I'm not gonna cut anything. No, just kidding. This is a tough question.
Yeah.
You know, our city budget is, what, $187 million? And a lot of our budgeting issues are because we are doing the right thing in a lot of areas. We are doing the right thing, like I said, spending 9% on homelessness and helping people get off the streets. That sadly is not sustainable, and we're gonna have to figure out how to get help. And for instance, I did some math, and we are spending 96, roughly $96,000 per unhoused individual with all the services and everything. And like I got, again, I said, that is the right thing to do. And I don't want to see those services cut whatsoever. So what else can we cut? A lot of our budget is fixed. Things that transit money comes in, transit money goes out. We have to pay for our city employees. We have to take care of the people who work for our city. We want our trash and recycling to be picked up on time and delivered to where it wants to go. As a cultural affairs commissioner, of course, I want our arts projects to be continued because art connects hearts and minds of individuals and helps promote better citizenry and makes our lives better. So I would try to figure out other ways for more income. We've already done the, some taxes on our businesses. I don't think we can stretch them anymore. But 60% of our revenue into our city is from our businesses. So one thing we can really do is try to make sure that our businesses, especially our small businesses, like the one we're sitting in here right now, the Village Well, stay open and thrive. This is extremely important to me as a small business owner myself and a child of two small business owners. So I don't know what we're gonna have to cut. We're gonna have to take a look.
Yeah, that's, that's time. We're gonna call you in that. Also, our budget is, is more than what you said. You said 187. I believe it's 327 million?
187 million is-
We're north of 300 million.
No, but that's the general fund. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. You're correct. Yeah, yeah.
General fund.
Yeah.
General fund.
And sometimes, you know, when you're speaking off the cuff, numbers can get a little soft. It's always good to actual check, check statistics at a, at a later point. So we will not be running any fact-check live. But we're all doing our best to stay feet on the ground. So our next speaker is gonna be Bubba.
Yeah, this is really relevant to what we're going through right now, obviously. Yeah, you know, like we, like we mentioned, 180, $180 million general fund, that is the most flexible spending that we have. And we do have choices that we can make. You know, there's the 375 million dollar number, but a lot of that is fixed. But the 180 million dollar number that, that we're about to approve, that is very flexible. And 33% of it, like I mentioned earlier, is going to one department. And, you know, we're, we're about to experience a pretty significant deficit for the city to the tune of several million dollars. And to me, you know, what if, that's a good opportunity for us to look back and be like, well, what have we been doing? What, what programs have we been approving? We approved a multimillion-dollar contract for license plate readers. We approved a $1 million reserve fund that mostly, you know, goes to the police department. We approved just recently another $150,000 for GPS trackers that launch out of, you know, police cars and stick onto, onto other cars and track folks. For me, those items, you know, they might sound flashy and appealing to some. But to me, public safety is so much more holistic than that. And like Nancy said, there's so many things we could be doing that are so immediate. We could be using that money to protect folks from falling into homelessness. There is a guarantee, basic guaranteed income program that West Hollywood has greenlit that we could be starting here in Culver City. We could be reaching out to folks who are on the verge of, of being evicted and, just like the city of LA does, and connecting them to services and trying to figure out how we can keep them in their homes. The budget, you know, Mayor McMorn says this on the dais a lot, but these are policy choices. These are choices we are making every single, you know, every other Monday. And we can choose a different future. And I'm really motivated to, to really examine the budget. You know, one thing that we're seeing is with, with these, with city revenues is they're down, obviously. And we need, we need, there's a constitutional amendment that's coming up on the ballot to allow us to increase, you know, increase different revenue sources. So I'm looking forward to that, too.
Yeah, that's, that's your time. So over to Nancy.
Yeah.
This is a great question. And I think, I've been thinking a lot about the possibility of serving during austerity. And I think it's very important that we think about, one, how are budgets currently done? What does the budget process looks like right now? So the budget process is basically, everyone starts with last year's budget, and then they ask for extras. So nowhere in there are we thinking about bottom-up budgeting. Bottom-up budgeting is where you take a look at the department needs or take a look at the vision needs and build the budget bottom up. This is something that was done in my industry fairly recently, energy efficiency and electrification. And it really did a lot for, for oversight and nitpicking, really nitpicking, let's go down every line. What do things in the budget, what do they get us? What are we getting as a community? What are the benefits? I think also, I, I know at least the police department, I don't know if all city departments do this, but any unused vacation above what you can carry, it gets paid out. So there is an incentive to, you know, roll over your vacation days for pay. I think we need to kind of disincentivize ways of accumulating that other bucket of payment. I would also carefully consider overtime and think about what is the appropriate level of response for certain activities. My daughter and husband bike to school every day. And at times, we see two or three police cars respond to one person having a mental health crisis, and what is appropriate.
All right. And we're gonna close that question with Yasmin.
Thank you so much. I recently put out a budget memo just reflecting on my observations of what is occurring this year with the budget. And Nancy is absolutely correct. We typically, the way our process is, I'm looking all over the place, but yes, the camera's there. Typically, every department gets what they get last year, plus enhancements. And from the jump, I always thought that didn't sit right. It's like, I've asked about performance-based budgeting. I've asked about other, you know, from the dais, y'all can go back and check if you'd like. But I've continually raised questions about how we fund, why we fund, how we evaluate. And I'm grateful to see, even just, you know, I'm grateful that this year, for the very first time, the city had a community budget workshop. Could it be improved? Of course. But we had one, and that came from a lot of advocacy. The best way is honestly to move toward participatory budgeting because we need to be responsive to our community because our community is not asking for police darts to track people for eight hours. I mean, they're asking to be safe, but we know that safety is like a spectrum of housing. It's of living wages, of healthcare, of mental health resources, all the things. Safe pathways throughout our community, many things. That's what our community is asking for. But the things that we fund are typically incongruent with that. And so I think, you know, there's always a lot of, or there can be some resistance to asking why we do things and how we do things. And I say frequently, you know, the status quo, it's so much more is possible than the status quo. And I deeply, deeply believe that. And I think our budget and just the process is indicative of, we've always done it this way, so we're gonna continue to do it this way, or don't ask too many questions about this, or, you know, resistance because questions are being raised. And, you know, I feel like, again, I have this mandate from the community. Ran as a super progressive person and, you know, thinking about our budget differently and thinking about community resources. And we can absolutely make sure that community and care is in the center of our budget process. And, you know, I still believe that, and I still fight for that. So hopefully that answered your question.
That answers the question. Thank you so much. So let's all take a breath. Those were our formal structured questions. We're gonna, no, we're not gonna ask you to pop any more titles, but we're gonna have a little, a few more, a few more, just easy lightning round questions. I hope they're easy. Anyway, just wanting to know. So I'll just, let's start with Janine, and we'll just pass the mic back up as we go. But what is the most inspiring thing that the city council has done? I don't know if we have to define that to, like, the current city council, but watching the city council, you, they did something and you thought, wow, that was great. What'd they do?
Okay, because I'm a cultural affairs commissioner. I have to say, I'm supporting our public art, supporting our Artist Laureate Program and the beautiful art project that Artist Laureate Katie Krantz did. And going beyond that, I have to pick two. It's also approving the, the repainting of the gun store to make it a community-based vision before we decide as a community what we're gonna do with that. I thought that is great. That's a way to bring us together.
All right. Pass it on over to Nancy. Nancy, what did the city council inspire you with?
I'm gonna go way more boring, although those were beautiful. I honestly agree. They're beautiful. But I'm gonna get more boring and say, passing the Measure RE, the real estate transfer tax, that was done during the moment that the city knew we were facing huge financial shortfalls in the foreseeable future due to pensions. And it happened fairly quickly, and it got put on the ballot, and voters voted for it. That is now producing a large sum of revenue. So that was really inspiring. It inspired me because evidence-based, data-driven policymaking makes a difference. It changes our lives for the better. It has made it possible to this, for the city to weather the storm of COVID and economic downturns. And I think it was a brilliant example of the importance of listening to experts. Thank you.
Great. Bubba, the city council did this. And you were just delighted. It was just great.
My answer is gonna be buying the gun store, but Janine got it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna pivot and say also as inspiring was the, the services that we've brought online just over the past couple of years. So the mobile crisis team in particular, it's a very bold program. It's, you know, we have experts literally in de-escalation and mental health, in housing services that are there for, you know, there for our residents and for folks who are here in Culver City to help them. And to me, that's a really incredible resource. That, we're literally creating this new system that's helping people every day. And then, you know, finally, I would say, safe, safe camping or the safe sleep site in our, in our Project Home Key, where we are really, we're really supporting people who are falling out, who would otherwise be on the streets. And we're bringing them in and giving them a place to call home. That, to me, is revolutionary and something we need to expand.
Awesome. So I don't know that you need to recuse yourself from current council if there's something you did that you were delighted with.
Oh, we're talking about it, girlfriend. We're talking about it. Yeah.
Or it could be any past city council. So whatever, whatever pops up for you.
I know this is a little hot button, but since we're sitting here at Village Well, I've been getting a lot of joy sitting here, watching the buses go by and folks utilizing mobility options right here. I know everybody's not gonna like that, but I gotta, you know, hey, it's award-winning and it deserves a prop. So I'm proud about that. I still am proud because we're seeing complete streets pop up all over LA County. We've absolutely led on this issue. And I feel very proud to have done that. It is a climate issue. It is a safety issue. I'm proud of it. I am also proud that we adopted one of the strongest iterations of our energy reach codes in the region and absolutely another climate, just, you know, a responsible thing to do. And parking minimums. We, and I remember that and feeling so proud because that is a huge contributor to the cost of building housing or whatever. And, you know, we continue to lead. And I, and I hope that we will soon return to, to leading in the region on these issues that touch all of us so, so acutely and impact all of our lives so closely.
Awesome. So see, no one could even just pick one. There wasn't even like one thing that the city council did. Everybody had multiple-
Local government I work for.
Multiple, multiple answers to that question. So hold on to that mic because we're gonna flip the other side of the coin and say, when were you most frustrated by the city council?
Oh, girl, how much time do you have? Whoa, what's going on?
It doesn't have to be current council. Could be previous, could be previous councils.
You know, oh, girl, I wish I didn't, I didn't start this one. Well, so what I will say, what I will say is all the examples we just gave were all decisions of five human beings, whether it was a three, two, four, one unanimous. And I think that speaks to the power each, each time we get up. And I mean, it is an absolute privilege, like, five people or four people, however. I think this was unanimous. Five people decided that this would exist, and it exists, and people use it. And it impacts people's, you know, it makes people feel safer biking. It may, it helps people get to work faster. Five human beings did that. And so, and so it feels to me like we could do so much. We could do so much good for so many people. But when we make choices where that is not the case, it's so deeply frustrating. Because it is, it is absolutely a choice to, to say, we're gonna kick it to committee or we're gonna throw, you know, $100,000, $200,000 on a study when we know, for example, minimum wage is something that absolutely, it's been studied to death. And yet and still, we still have one of the lowest minimum wages in LA County. That's deeply frustrating. So I could continue to go on, but we're gonna stop there. Okay.
Keep it a little brief. So, Bubba, when did, when did the council frustrate you? Try to, try to say it one minute, 90 seconds. Keep it in. No, you're good. You're good.
I love cranky round. No, the, the time I was the most frustrated probably recently was, there was a ASIC, which is Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities, grant for 100 units of date-restricted affordable housing, capital A affordable housing, funded by the state. All we had to do to make the grant competitive and staff had literally put it on council's desk, was pair it with a protected bike lane. Great, right? We get mobility and we get housing? Amazing. You know, LA City just passed Measure HLA. That was gonna be 66%, that was passed by 66%. So people are hungry for better mobility. We didn't talk too much about mobility in this, but two council members abstained because someone complained about a shadow of the affordable housing complex. And someone complained that the, that the protected bike lane might take a couple of parking spots, a protected bike lane for people to get to where they need to go. And then lastly, this, this past Overland Protected Bike Lane project was about to be approved, and council members, a couple of council members wanted to guarantee that they could reject- members wanted to guarantee that they could reject the $20 million grant, and that was the reason they were able to vote for it. So I just think the conversations about how critically we need these things need to change, and that's part of why I'm running.
All right, pass it on to Nancy. Nancy, when did they frustrate you? Again, doesn't have to be current council, can be historical.
They frustrated me when they didn't reappoint Baba Fish to the Committee on Housing and Homelessness because he was skilled, because he was super active, and he was incredibly informed and solution-driven. They frustrated me when, the same day that the current council majority, on that very first date, voted to repeal the previous council's minimum wage for health workers. They frustrated me when they, the majority voted to remove the protective bike lane from the Move Culver City project. They frustrated me when they, it's a bit heartbreaking.
People under 10.
It's a bit heartbreaking. I just want to speak to the community because all of these things are just policy choices that can cost people's lives. When they declared a merge, did an emergency declaration to basically criminalize being unhoused, that is heartbreaking, and I will stop there.
All right. Janine, when did they frustrate you?
Sure. I was actually frustrated that there were a couple councils back who broke precedent. We have a, we have an unwritten rule, now it's written, how it goes in the selection of vice mayors and mayors. And I was very disappointed a couple council members, councils ago, that they disrupted that. And because I'm a community-based person, because I believe in connecting hearts, I thought that it was the wrong way to go. And what did I scribble here without my glasses? I'm also frustrated when city council sometimes appears, not this council, this council's perfect, sometimes doesn't understand the importance of community voice and community involvement. Because even if a council member believes that their way is the right way, it does take time, and it's the right thing to do, to bring the public along. Because if you bring the public along on whatever your vision is, and they've now got buy-in because they were part of the process, that vote and that policy is more likely to stay and be supported by the public. So I've been frustrated in the past when that did not happen, and I look forward to being on council and welcoming the voice of the public.
All right. We're gonna call that the end of that particular question. So, so obviously, there's a lot of, you know, great things that councils can do. There's a lot of difficult things that councils do, and it's hard to please all the people all the time. But when we put a tax measure on the ballot, and we put something on the ballot and that has to go, recent measures with, you had talked a little bit about Measure RE, we wanted to ask, where did you sit on Measure E on the March election? And again, this is a lightning round, so just give us like 30 seconds. So, Janine, you wanna start?
You talked about.
Measure E.
Measure E, the bond.
The school bond, yeah.
Yeah, I supported the school bond. I advised the bond committee. I had a sign on my lawn, and I served on the previous facilities bond oversight committee.
Great. Nancy?
I came out strongly supporting the bond. I did lots of events. I even did some canvassing, got to talk to some neighbors. I think Measure E was critical because of the passing of Prop 13 many decades ago.
All right.
Similar answer, did a ton of canvassing for Measure E, $360 million to renovate and modernize and update our schools. So important, and was proud to support that one. Thanks.
Mine's gonna be a little longer. I'm sorry, friend. So, my daughter no longer is in the school district. She goes to school outside of the district. And so, my concern with, well, let me just, I voted for it. I put it on social that I voted for it the day of voting, but I fell short of endorsing it because I had an issue with the kind of process of it simultaneously, just because I, you know, I tried to be balanced. I had an issue with the potential parks effort that was trying to prioritize two of our parks over all of them very quickly, and there were a lot of parallels between that and Measure E. Definitely different, different causes, but because of my issue with the process of parks and the parallels, I didn't feel right supporting one and not supporting the other. Plus, my kid isn't in the school, so, you know, it just was a little complicated. But I did put up on social the day I voted for it. I did, you know, but I didn't like dock doors or anything like that. So, a little complicated for me, but I'm really grateful that it passed because our schools and infrastructure needs a lot of investment, so happy to see that.
Great. All right. So everybody, everybody was yes on E. So, cool. We also had a question about whether or not you supported Measure RE, and we talked a little bit about that in terms of how it's affecting budgets and, you know, what's going on with pensions and payroll and all that. So Yasmin, you wanna start there? Measure RE.
Measure RE was in 2020.
Yes.
Yes. So definitely, I put out videos and was very vocal in support of that. Very grateful to the leadership of former mayor and colleague Alex Fish for spearheading Measure RE. It's a little boomer bust that far, but it is absolutely essential and critical to the sustainability of our budget, and so I'm very grateful that it passed. So grateful to the voters. Keep it up, keep it up.
Yeah, I also supported Measure RE and Measure BL. I mean, like Nancy said, because of Prop 13, we have to make city revenues in such a variety of different ways. You know, real estate transfer taxes, business license taxes, impact fees on development, sales tax. There's so many different things that we have to do, so definitely supported that as well.
I very much supported Measure RE. As, you know, I said, it was one of the things that gave me hope. I actually helped write one of the arguments and support that are put in the voter guide. So very, very much supported it.
Measure RE, a complicated thing. I, I was very curious about Measure RE, and I read a lot of pros and cons about it. This is not gonna be a lightning answer. I think I get my, my second non-lightning.
We'll give you a long lightning. Yasmin, a little long lightning there.
I remember when Measure RE started, and I was talking to my friends in Santa Monica, and they asked me what the level was, and I told them what it was. I've got a lot of big laughs because they said, why is it so low?
Yeah.
And Measure RE is affecting people who've bought a home a long time ago and are trying to, you know, who want to sell their home. It's affecting people's retirement or how they, what they pass on. That being said, Measure RE has brought in income to the city, which is a positive thing, but it's not at the rate I think that we'd hoped for.
Okay. All right, just a couple more lightning. We had some kind of, you know, they're Culver City, but they're bigger issues than that. So we'll do another quick hand up the microphone on supporting Vote 16. How do you feel about Vote 16? Janine, you wanna start?
I don't.
End of question.
But I will. Listen, I'm the parent of three, I'm very proud parent of three daughters who were in youth in government and also in leadership at the high school. So I am thrilled that high school students are taking an issue that's really important to them and trying to get it on the ballot. It is really thrilling to see. It is not on the ballot yet, so I'm gonna wait and see.
Okay. Nancy, Vote 16, yes, no?
Strongly support. I've canvassed with them as well. They are delightful leaders, not the future's leaders, today's leaders. Our youth are gonna be, you know, outrageously impacted by all the bad policy decisions we have made for decades. So it is only fair they get a say and start learning how to be civic-minded individuals early. Strongly support.
Similar. I also strongly support. I went hard and continue to go hard for Vote 16 and those organizers. 16-year-olds vote, I mean, they, excuse me, they, they work, they pay taxes, they drive. They also, you know, studies show that when 16, 17-year-olds can vote in local elections, that they become habitual voters at higher numbers for life. That, to me, is very exciting about increasing turnout. And the studies also show that cold cognition, which is the part of your brain that, that folks use to vote, is actually fully developed at that age. Cold cognition, it's, it's a real study, and the evidence that they showed was really compelling, and they are an incredible group of organizers, and we should, like Nancy said, really be encouraged, be encouraging our current leaders who are gonna be the most impacted by our policy choices.
All right. Vote 16, yes, no?
Yes, girlfriend, and let me tell you why. Because these young people are so fantastic, disproportionately impacted by our policies, and it is absolut, you know, speaking of being disappointed, I'm going back to that one. Because it is an absolute choice that five human beings or three made to force those young people to have to go door-to-door to get, gather these thousands of signatures, when it failed by just 16 votes. Those young people in 2022 got more votes than any sitting city council member who won in 2022, and yet, three human beings decided that because they fell short by just 16 votes, the alliteration on that one. But, you know, they could've said, you know, we're gonna do it again. 16 votes, it's clear that there is a desire in our community, less than a room full of children, okay? Than a typical classroom right down the road, okay? It's heartbreaking the decisions that we make, but I am so encouraged and proud of these young folks who show up, who fight for the democracy that we say that we believe in, and absolutely deserve a seat at the table because they are impacted by the decisions that we continue to make. Thank you.
So everybody take another breath. Take another breath. And exhale, yeah. So, kind of bringing it down to some nitty-gritty campaign stuff, as you are running, and I'm gonna go back to choosing rather than just passing. So that was, that was sort of, that was our good, our good lightning move there. So, most important to getting the endorsement here from the Culver City Democratic Club, they want to know, are there any groups that you would not accept an endorsement or a campaign contribution from? So I would like to start with Nancy. Keeping it short still, yeah.
Okay. My campaign does not accept contributions from law enforcement, tobacco, fossil fuel, or real estate development companies.
Or endorsements?
Or endorsements from law enforcement.
Tobacco.
I guess tobacco, fossil fuels, and fossil fuels, and I would say probably, I probably wouldn't also, wouldn't accept endorsements from like a utility either, just because potential conflicts.
Okay. Yeah, you get to call them, yeah. So, Janine, anybody you would not take contributions from? Anybody whose endorsement you would not accept?
Yeah, sure, thank you. There is a new law. I feel bad, you're holding a wire. All right. There's a new law that you have to accuse yourself if an entity contributes more than $250 to your campaign. So a lot of this question will probably, hopefully be solved because you won't have big influx of money coming in from entities. So that being said, I'm wearing my National Gun Violence Awareness Month bracelet right here. You could buy the one from me on eBay, no, just kidding. I will never accept money from any gun lobby, and if you want to talk to me personally about why that is, I will tell you in private. Fossil fuels and tobacco companies, absolutely.
Okay. Bubba, who would you not accept an endorsement from? Who would you not take campaign contributions from?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't accept, and I don't accept contributions from fossil fuels developer companies and organizations and, and police organizations and, you know, tobacco and gun organizations either, or companies. And then there, you know, there are, there's like far-right wing groups too, that I would never accept endorsements from, that are, you know, contributing to fear-mongering of folks experiencing homelessness, and some of them are here in the city, but, you know, they know who they are, don't need to name-drop, but I, but, you know, that's really important to me too, is to not accept those endorsements either.
All right, great.
Not that they would ever come.
Yasmin, who would you, who would, you never know. I mean, yeah.
A little bit. I don't know if these people are knocking down the door to say, hey, I'm gonna support you, you know?
Who would you not accept an endorsement from, not accept a campaign contribution from?
Yeah, you know, law enforcement, oil, gun developer. I think everything from last go around, same for this year. I mean, I just think, it's, it's not always the way that folks, you know, if they donate, that means you're gonna vote that way, but just as a personal belief, like, I just don't want to have any involvement with folks that are furthering harm to our community and to our, you know, our society. So, yeah.
Good. So, we're gonna, we're gonna start to wrap it down here. A couple more questions. Last week's second most anticipated verdict was the Friends of Move Culver City versus Culver City. Should the city have commissioned an environmental impact report before considering car traffic through downtown? As we're sitting here looking at, the lights are falling, so you're not seeing as much traffic through downtown. Why don't we start with Bubba?
Absolutely. You know, I was a real, a big advocate for, for this, for our downtown bike and bus lanes. I live on this project. I go out of my door and see folks biking with their kids every single day on their way to school, on their way to the grocery store, on their way to the senior center. On, you know, it has, the data was very clear. Micro mobility exploded. We saw an explosion of transit use along the corridor. And this is a region-wide amenity. It's not just for the people of Culver City. We have a train station, a metro station there that connects, this project connects to our downtown, and that connects to this Duquesne project. It's gonna connect to our Overland project at some point soon. And so advocates were very, very clear. You need to do an environmental impact report review if you're going to do this. The law was very clear that pilot projects are not exempt. There was no exemption made in state law for pilot projects of environmental impact review. We'll see, you know, the, the results of the lawsuit. I don't think anyone here knows what's gonna happen. So it's definitely, it's up in the air, but I certainly think that environmental impact review would have been, a report would have been appropriate. Thank you.
Pass on over to Janine.
Yes, I saw you look at me. You made eye contact. I knew it was coming this way.
I'm telegraphing.
Yeah, exactly. I got it. Yeah, I think environmental impact reports should have been done because it would have saved people in our city a lot of headache and, and harm and arguing. What happened was, it was, the environmental impact report was waived. They tried to do a, the last city council tried to do a positive thing by making, you know, for changing downtown Culver City and making a bus lane and, and trying to make things happen. COVID happened, and people like woke up from the COVID stupor, which many people were in, and then this, they woke up to this. And I think if they had done the study originally, we would have figured out what would have happened. We wouldn't have had all this, all this headache and argument and a lawsuit, which I'm very disappointed is happening because we're talking about our city budget, and now we're paying to fight a lawsuit. And 70% of the people in Culver City don't like it. And also, the lawsuit stopped something positive from happening, which is connecting and continuing our bike lane all the way to Los Angeles, and we can't do that. And we need that. So, yes, short answer, longer, yes, we should have done a report immediately. And also, by not doing it and having this lawsuit, now it's throwing cold water on any city municipalities possibly who want to try something new, to try to make mobility and, and bus ridership and different ways people can get to and fro happen faster.
On, over to Nancy, our climate practitioner.
Thank you. Yes, the city was required, legally required, per my non-expert legal opinion, required to do an environmental impact report as you are required to do any time you introduce new traffic. So, yes, it was required. It was a yes or no answer, right? I have a question, sorry.
It was, the question was, do you, do you think it should have happened?
Yes, they should have done an environmental impact report.
Okay. And Yasmin?
I can't really speak about that, but what I will say, and reiterate, is that Move is award-winning, okay? And we hit all of the metrics. I think micro mobility was like over 50%, ridership was up, pedestrian usage was up. There was a lot of emphasis placed on a 400-person survey of Culver City-only residents that I don't know is truly reflective of the broad intersection of needs that we have. And I also just want to lift up again, thinking about the five human beings that make policy for our community, is that the litigation only impacted removing the lane, and we could have continued with the project, but that was a choice of our council majority to not move forward with extending the bike lanes, because that, it's my understanding, and y'all could fact-check that outside, but it's not the source of the litigation. And we could have done that, but choices were made to not do that. And we could have done that, but choices were made to not do that. So once again, the power of the local government, friends, okay, there we go.
So cleaning up our last couple of bits, this is going to be a real fast yes or no double question. Have you always been a Democrat? Are you a member of the Culver City Democratic Club? So take it to Janine. There we go.
Lifelong Democrat, I've always been a Democrat, and yes, I am a member of the Culver City Democratic Club.
Over to Nancy.
Ditto.
Easy.
As in lifelong Democrat. Just in case people don't know what I meant.
We got you, yeah, yeah, we got you, yeah.
Ditto.
Yeah?
Plus one.
All right, there we go. So we're going to close out with, are we doing closing statements? We're doing closing statements. So the official, it's been great hearing from all of you, members of the Culver City Democratic Club, will discuss city council endorsements at their June 12 meeting, so upcoming. Then they will vote over the next two days, so the endorsement process is that a chosen candidate, chosen by direct vote of the membership, and candidates must receive at least 60%. It's a pretty high bar for endorsements here. Thank you all for sharing your thoughts with us and for your commitment to community. We're going to give you, I think we said, one minute, two minutes? Back to two minutes for closing statements. So I'm on the wrong page, and that doesn't matter, but anyway, I just want to say, as a journalist who's been covering local news since 2009, I don't know that I could even have dreamt of having a panel of candidates like this. Bubba, you're in the minority here as a gender, and that's remarkable. I mean, you all know how we have that great big wall of pictures that we refer to gently as the Wall of Dudes, and it's just, it's really heartening to have such diversity stepping forward. So thank you all for being candidates, and thank you for your time here with us this evening, and let us start our closing statements with, closing statement starts with Janine.
All right, thank you. First of all, I appreciate, I appreciate this forum, and thank you very much, and I appreciate Village Well for hosting it, it's a very welcoming place always, and I'm thankful to be here. From renter to becoming a first-time homeowner, I'm grateful to Culver City for providing a beautiful community to raise my family. All three of my daughters went from kindergarten to high school in our school district, and they made lifelong friends because we were able to put down roots. I want the same opportunities for others who choose to make Culver City their home. Culver City is a bustling, modern city. Being self-governing and part of the most populated county in California brings unique challenges and opportunities. Because of my work in the Democratic Party, in my union as a business owner, a parks and neighborhood advocate, a volunteer in the schools, and a cultural affairs commissioner, I am in a distinct position to help guide us through whatever comes our way. I understand on a granular level how our city government works and what it takes to make needed positive changes. In this campaign for city council, I am honored to have the support of hundreds of community members and elected officials, including current and past council members and school board members, the entire cultural affairs commissioner which I serve, well-known environmentalists and animal rights groups, including the Democrats for the Protection of Animals, who just got their endorsement, Equality Preparments, business owners and leaders inside and outside Culver City, including LA City Councilmember Katie Yoslovsky and Democratic superstar Congressmember Ted Lieu, who represents part of Culver City. From housing affordability and homelessness to public safety, a thriving business community, traffic, sustainability, and ensuring safe and beautiful streets for pedestrians, cyclists, and all forms of mobility, I plan to serve with compassion and understanding. My goal is to continue to make Culver City a safe, inclusive, and welcoming place for all. Thank you, and I look forward to your support.
Great. Next, so take it over to Bubba.
Yeah, thank you so much for hosting this, Village Well, Culver City Democratic Club, Judith, again, shout out to Culver City Crossroads, please subscribe, I think it's five bucks a month.
Yep.
Get it, you know, get it done, support local journalism. And, you know, I'm really motivated to bring the experience I have as someone from, you know, a small suburb outside of Houston who was queer and who, you know, really, really craved an inclusive community and accepting community, and that's something I'm really excited to continue to foster here in Culver City. We've made great strides, you know, increasing our supportive services for our unhoused population, increasing our mobility options here, and we've made strides creating a system of care, of care-first approach to public safety, and those are the things I really want to continue to focus on if I'm lucky enough to be elected your council member. I served, well, first, as soon as I got to Culver City, I got involved, right? I was an advocate with Bike Culver City, which seeks to expand mobility options across the city. I was an advocate with Culver City for More Homes, which Nancy was a founder of, and I was the vice chair of the Committee on Housing and Homelessness, where I was a part of major efforts like abolishing parking minimums, which drive up the cost of housing, and in creating Project Home Key and other initiatives that are so important, Safe Camping. And for me, you know, creating an inclusive community and creating an inclusive city is about bringing all of those things together. You know, I'm currently a deputy for the County of Los Angeles, I'm graduating two weeks from UCLA with a degree in public policy, with a concentration in urban policy, and I'm excited to put all of that to work for the people of Culver City, to make this, to continue to make Culver City a vibrant and inclusive place where everyone can thrive. I'm excited to be endorsed by my mayor, Yasmin Amani-McMoRan, our council member Freddie Puzza, Nancy Barber as well, and West Side progressives across the region, I'm just really excited to be in front of you and be, you know, asking for your vote today. So thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
We'll pass it over to Yasmin.
Hello, friends, we're back again, closing out. Thank you so much, Judith, thank you, Village Well, thank you, Democratic Club, and thank you all at home for staying with us, very grateful for your time. There's a lot I could say in this moment, but, you know, y'all, we are able to do such amazing things. We created a whole Department of Housing and Human Services, we created a whole new mobile crisis unit that is responding to our mental health needs from both our unhoused and housed neighbors. We have created and supported a motel conversion and providing and opening space for our neighbors. We created the first complete street on the West Side. So much more is possible, like, it is such a privilege and an honor to do this work, and I think in order to do it, you have to have the vision, you have to have the vision to really see a more expansive table. I sit up at that table of my colleagues, of white men, and that's absolutely fine, but it's not representative of our community, right? I feel the weight of that, I bring that, you know, with me, and I still stand unapologetically in advocating on what I know is right, and believing in equity, and believing that more is possible, and that what community, and the community needs and care and belonging at the center, and I hope to continue to keep that at the center, and hope to continue to fight for you and for our needs and for our children and for our climate and sustainability goals and our transit goals. I mean, y'all, it is, it is absolutely possible. So I'm honored to serve, I am so, you know, I mean, it's wild that I'm the first woman of color and first black woman to be mayor, speaks to a lot of the barriers that are in place. I'm honored to have the support, I haven't released my endorsements yet, I'm behind y'all, I've got a day job, I'm a mom, I'm a mayor, it's a lot going on, but I'm honored to have the support of Congresswoman Sidney Kalmager-Dove, our supervisor Holly Mitchell, I'm getting the signal that I'm running out of time, so I'm grateful, I hope to earn your support, if I haven't already, please reach out, thank you so much for considering me, and I hope to, I hope to earn your support moving, moving forward, thank you.
And on over to Nancy.
Thank you, Culver City Democratic Club, and thank you really, Judith, for the great questions, and thank you to Village Well. I want to close by asking our community to, to really ask your candidates and your electeds, what can we build and what can we create? We should be thinking about abundance. I can envision creating lots of housing, encouraging job creation, encouraging living wages, we can create a 15-minute city that we can easily walk, bike, or take public transit to and from various work and leisure activities in our city, and to share, you know, I like to call myself, and I do this at work with our team, we are solutionaries. I believe our community can organize and reflect and identify what is unsustainable and what is unjust, and then we can develop the solutions that are healthy and equitable, that do the most good and cause the least harm for people and the environment. Obviously, I'm here to ask for your vote, as we all are, I want to share that if elected, I would be the first Latina to serve in Culver City as a council member, despite the fact that 24% of our city identifies as Hispanic or Latino. I would serve on the council as data inform, policy research, evidence-supported policymaker. Thank you.
Great, so thank you so much for tuning in, for staying with us, for keeping up with all of this going on, and we're going to say, one, wait, one more, we're going to have one more thing.
Happy Pride Month.
Yep. You knew it, Happy Pride, come to Culver City Pride on the 29th, that's a PSA, we got our support, it's tied up in here, so just wanted to plug Culver City Pride, come out.
Applause for Pride Month, and again, the club will be voting on June 12 on endorsements, and if you're looking for local news, Culver City Crossroads is online five days a week, so, thanks again.